Like I made the order, the Jackson County Commission is being worked session October 15, 2018. First of all, call, Mr. Manning.
District one, Mr. Guffey. District two, Mr. Venable. President. District three, Ms. Gilbert. District four, Mr. Sis, president, chairman, president.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Now we'll have him chatted by Mr. John Porter.
Godfather, we're blessed to be here. We're blessed to be citizens of this great country and of this great county. Beautiful county that we live in. We're so thankful for the blessings you provide us. Thank you for men and women who are willing to serve the public in elected positions and other positions. We're thankful for them and pray that you give them wisdom and discernment, compassion and compassion is needed. But right now, God, we pray for those that have been affected by the recent storm. We pray that you be with them. God, we acknowledge the power of your natural beauty and the natural wonders of your world. We also pray for compassion and peace and comfort for those that have been affected. So we pray that all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Nancy Wood, John, Mr. Venable, with the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda of today's meeting, October 15, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve this agenda?
Make it motion.
Have a motion to have second.
Second.
Have a motion as second. On the favor side, aye. All opposed, no. Next, we'll go to awarding presentations. Now we'll have Senator Stephen Liston.
Will you let me go?
Right, right, right here will be fine. This award is presented to the Senator Stephen Liston in grateful appreciation for the dedication and service to the county government in Alabama through state, through senate sponsorship and passage of Act 2018-471, authorizing the local government health insurance program to utilize its effectiveness and discounts to process workers' compensation claims for counties. Senator, I appreciate your work. Sort of explain this to us a little bit.
This is another tool we put in your toolbox that can help y'all save money if you can self-administrate your workers' comp claims where prior they had to go elsewhere. It just saves you a little money, y'all. Every little bit counts.
Yes, yes.
Thank y'all very much.
We appreciate your effort.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sure.
Next, we make the comment from Sis. Chuck, are you going to say something tonight?
Mike asked me to get some figures I gave him in there about the base salary for the three courthouse employees that work there now.
Okay, Ms. Parksdale, were you going to say something tonight?
I just came to see if the amendment that you were talking, that we were talking about or anything concerning the Clark's company.
They'll come up in just a minute when we talk about the budget, ma'am. Thank you. First, our discussion is DHR lease agreement. Now, two weeks ago at work session, you know, I, Mr. Porter, myself, had met with representatives from the state DHR concerning the lease budget. And I think myself and him, they will pay $1 a square foot on the lease of that building, period. Throughout the state, that's all they pay where they do all the maintenance. And they would consider an agreement if we do all of the lease, if we do all the maintenance in that lease. And that figure is, it'd be same. I quoted the $8 a square foot with that and pretty much got shot down right off the bat. For the commissioners that don't know, this DHR building was built in 1993, and the state of Alabama, DHR, paid the bond on it. So the county commission hasn't been out a penny on it yet. After the 10-year bond was paid off, we started getting the dollar a square foot for the building. I talked with the local DHR director the other day, and she was asking us what the commission was going to do concerning this building. And I said, it was coming up tonight at work session, and if there's any change, we'll be voting on the next commission meeting. And she just wanted to inform me that the next day, she was instructed by her superiors to go and look at another building in case that nothing was worked out, that her superiors was wanting a contract of some kind. They didn't like pay rent out of any kind of that contract. But she was going to look at another building. She told me she would like to stay there at the other building she was going to look at would work, but it wouldn't work as good. She'd like to stay where she was at.
Can we just do a 12 buck?
Well, we can do, we can do whatever we all agree on. They wanted a five-year with five-year options like the F4. If we sort of all have to do that, if we want to stop the administration, we can sort of do that at a certain time, but we can do that if you want.
I don't either, unlike Mr. Guffey. You know, I think there's, that's a very cheap rate, the dollar, dollar a square foot. And I think there's other people out there who would pay more than this, you know, to have a building that size. So I went over there and I landed back last year, and about every room minutes utilized. I mean, I don't really know of places, because we're not saying they don't have one, that they can go out and find where everything is only there a compliment like it is, you know.
The thing about that building, finding somebody that would want that, it's basically an office building. You're not going to find somebody that's going to need that many offices right off the bat.
Our own doctor's office, like, something could be available.
It would be, you know, it would be big enough for a fine doctor's office. Finding somebody to fill it up, if we were to lose that tenant, is the problem with that. Do we take, do we take the dollar a square foot or lose the, possibly lose that amount of money every month?
Do you remember when this building was built? The health department, when those buildings built about the same time? And did the county build the health department building and then give it to the state, and then the state pays bond on it? I mean, I was, yeah, I wasn't keeping up the politics near as much as I am now, but I seem to remember those shovels.
We did have a different rating with the health department, because they did think that building. And I'm remembering the state department of health now owns that building. I think the deal with DHR is part of human resources cannot own the property. So they're, when Mr. Asher and I talked to them, they were not interested at all in buying the building.
I was thinking that the county built the health department building.
I think that's correct.
And paid the bond on it. And then the state paid the bond on the DHR building.
I don't remember the two being tied together.
That was a deal, I thought. I was just thinking that.
I don't recall that. I was not the county attorney at that time. And follow Mr. Asher said, I don't think it's a law or nothing. I don't think it's do no maintenance or do all maintenance. My understanding, the talk with them, was they would negotiate a rate based upon how much maintenance we did and how much they did. And they sent us the figures. I don't think you got them. Or what the costs were and how much they could spend.
They are, well, it's about $50,000 for three years.
Right. So they gave us a rate that they would pay at $5 if we did everything, including changing light bulb. And immediately, they said they understood people not going to accept that. And they were putting their best foot forward for them, for their size. So it just depended on what the commission wants to do. We just, we ought to do something fairly soon, so it'd be good if it was all.
The commission won't continue to negotiate.
Well, one other piece of information, while she was over there at the office the other day, she said the roof is 18 years old. And she got a price, and I know, she said, now I know this is a wide range, but I can't recollect. She said it was between $30,000 and $50,000 for the roof. You know, that's a wide range, but it's at least 30, but less than 50.
They had requested a letter stating that what they had paid us so far, they were doing five months of rent.
They had an MOU that they requested that we sign that would keep them paid up for five months.
Do we want to do that? Or do we want to just wait till after the negotiation? They don't think continuing to operate is going to be a problem.
She's been, the local lady's been pressed to get a contract signed. That's why she's going to look at another building.
If the commission is of mind to do it, we can execute the memorandum of agreement of understanding, so that we acknowledge that the money they paid and all of us will cover them until January, which will give us between now and January if it's ever worked out. That will be, I think that will satisfy what they need. They just can't continue with nothing.
I would think that would get them to move. That way they won't be uncomfortable whether, you know, whether or not they're going to be there.
Right. Well, I will let them know tomorrow, then, that we will actually keep the MOU for the next, authorize the chairman to sign it the next week. And so if we can get that done, then that'll give us time to negotiate if that's what you want.
Okay. Now, do we need to vote on this at the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If there is no objections, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting.
Just for the MOU?
Just for the MOU. Next that we have for discussion is budget amendments. As you, there's two different ones. We've had some discussion about adjusting the courthouse security budget and also about adjusting budget for the circuit clerk's office, for the administration fee, for the money they collect from us.
I'm the circuit clerk. I mean, I don't think we should have removed that, that amount from, that's the money that they administrated, they used for collections. I don't feel like we should have removed that. We have been given appropriation and amroged, and I think it just got, what they were not giving, I think it just got confused. Personally, I don't, I don't think we need to, we need to put that back in the book.
Administration fee is what it's called.
Yeah, that's what they collect your money for.
Well, I'll place this as a separate item on the next commission meeting, where we will adjust the budget and put this process of faith, is that the name of it? Process of faith back on for the circuit clerk's office.
For administrative fee.
Administrative, yeah.
Of the phase. Thank you.
The other item for our budget amendment discussion has to do with courthouse security. I believe that we've been in talk for a while concerning this, about it going from the way it's operating now to a private security firm doing it, you know, and it got put in the budget, three months, as it is, nine budgets without, nine months without. And it was a discussion from some of you that want to amend that budget. So any discussion from you guys?
Yeah, we had our meeting the other day, and I really feel strongly that we need to start having quarterly, smaller meetings with just, what did you call it?
A subcommittee.
Where, you know, at least some of the commissioners be there, judge Rockley, Judge Holt, you know, just as small groups as we can if there aren't issues. Because, you know, there is some things that we could look at, maybe improve it on, change it. But I mean, I'm, I'm one though, but I, I mean, I'm good with putting it back to 1942 until we can have some meetings to discuss those things.
Well, I want all these figures that Chuck got, and before we make a definite decision, I appreciate you getting these, Chuck. And like I said, this is not our money to really deal with. It's the people's money. And we're still with it several thousand dollars. And you know, every article comes out of the paper, it seems like that we have tuck away security completely. We haven't tucked away anything. We've just made calls about getting contract service. And that's, that's the thing I'm hearing, that we took it away. I said, no. I said, when you sitting up there looking at all the things and different entities that need money, I said, you've got to make some cuts somewhere. And that's, that's where we were at. And I said, right now, it's still basically like it is. But I want to look at this and see where we can go. Like I told you the other day, I must look at the faces that we're used to seeing instead of some hard contractor. But that's just my opinion. I want to put these figures together and see if we can address some issues and try to come to an agreement on something.
Well, one of the, one of the things that got brought up that there in our budget here, and when we were even discussing it, that we're getting though, was that deputies at different times does warrants.
Sir, warrants, bail reports, help with jury, I mean, inmates when they're up in court.
There's another thing I look at, they've been, in the last couple of months, there's been several guns, and now it's taken away from individuals trying to get in the courthouse. Then we go to another, that's the reason I want to have these things up, because we don't know. I mean, I'm not an attorney, you know, police officer, so I don't know what the law is. I mean, I don't know if this private security firm could even detain somebody and take their weapon off of them, or if they can. So that's just some of the issues. That's the reason, like I said, it's got blown out in proportion. This is just something we were going to talk about, look at to see. Because we're always looking at ways that we can, you know, try to save the taxpayers some money and try to keep operating. But I don't want to do it at the expense of the people.
Well, if there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting to say if you want to amend this budget. Is that okay? Does anyone, can we put it on there for a vote?
I will be asking. I wonder if we should, well, that's completely total. I just hate for the voting.
I think before we have, in my opinion, before we even have a vote on it, is come back together like we did the other day and maybe put these figures and have some discussion more, before it's brought back to table.
Personally, I see no reason in moving it back up and then moving it down again. And we need to move that number down, whether it's closing the wall doors, closing the wall doors part of the year. There's a lot of different things we can look at. But personally, I see no reason in moving it up and moving it back down. And it needs to be at what we got it or less. And I know there was some discussion about possibly charging some of this to different entities in the courthouse. They're protected under courthouse security as well. So some of those, that all needs to be talked.
That's what I would.
And we may get our savings that we need doing that.
Right.
And leave. There's a lot to be discussed. And, you know, when we were doing all the budgets, we had $20-plus million ducked up, you know, with all the different budgets. And, you know, this was something that we couldn't agree on, that we had a lot of discussion about, and we decided to just move forward like we did. And I apologize that it got twisted out and everybody got misinformation. And we never had any intentions of doing anything without having a meeting with everybody involved.
We just had to get to that. But another thing, too, since we're in an official meeting, I want to make sure it's clear, no time do we ever discuss letting any deputy go, at no time. Was that ever discussed?
I've got to have a place to put them if you don't let them go if you get private security. I don't have one.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's the reason these talks were even going on, was just kidding. I mean, is there going to be an opportunity? If not now, two years down the road, three years down the road? You know what I mean? It's just something that was just, we kick around every department about different things that we can do. But I just want to make sure it's clear that we never discussed terminating anybody.
I haven't had a chance to talk with Jeff Arnold, who was going to look at the alternative funding, you know, where it's charged against the different offices yet. I've had some, so I don't know.
That could be a big one.
Hey, if it's, if it will work, that will take care of the short term. Okay, with that being said, you?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The security committee did lead, and it was a unanimous resolution by the committee to ask the commission to fully fund the security plan.
The security plan calls for two deputies, correct?
Correct.
It's funded enough to cover two deputies.
Not only for three months.
No, it's, it's not.
Two deputies, we have three now.
And how much is it for two deputies?
All three deputies. All three deputies was 147, 8.29.
And 42.
And that is, to cut, and that's also, that's also something to cover contract employees that, when we have people on vacation.
We budgeted like $133,000 or something for courthouse security. And again, part of that was in contract services.
That's not what my budget that I got showed.
You have, your budget should have been $90,000 in contract services alone. And then some impersonal losses.
Do you have the budget?
Well, I've got it downstairs. I mean, I get, I read you a copy.
And how much did you budget for wages?
$133.
Now, wages part was for, like I, like I discussed in our last meeting, we budgeted three months' worth of three deputies on the door.
Right.
And nine months with the contractor rate. So you got a combination of payroll-related expenses and contract services.
So are you telling me that you have enough for payroll and wages for two deputies for 12 months?
Total in that budget, yes.
Not in the contract, minus the contract.
Well, you would be, if you do not go with contract services.
It's the same dollars.
That's all I've been asking is for you to make the contract dollar to the wages and salaries.
Yes. That's what I'm saying. When the budget was approved, it had $90,000 in contract services. If it's amended, we'll take that down if we go back to.
To $15,000, I think's what it has been in previous year.
Yes, ma'am. Well, it would go back to the rates that each deputy cost with all their benefits also.
And that was what the committee recommended, that the plan be fully funded.
All I get confused was, that's really the idea it would have. But I think it's just.
It hasn't, though. You've got $90,000 in contract services.
Contract services and that are the same thing. He just broke them out.
That's not the same. The plan doesn't call for contract services.
Mr. Manning would like to address.
My just address, hopefully, we'll try to clear this up. As I understand this, the decision was made to do three months with three deputies and nine months at contract labor rate. If they're changed that, the amendment that we do will move that from contract services back into the payroll section of the budget. That's what the amendment should cover. The question is, yes, I'd have to pull the budget, but we have something like $133,000 total for both budget there, which would be, we said $95,000 for two deputies you're up. So we would have enough in there, and the amendment would be moving some of the contract services back over into the regular payroll section. That's what the amendment should cover, as I understand it.
And that's all that I think the committee has requested at this stage, is to move it and fully fund it as it is. And if it needs to be changed, then have these meetings and get your input on how you want to change it.
Well, once we get these gun and figures together and see where Jeff's at, I think we'll have a better understanding of what we need to do with pushing the money where it's going to be situated to benefit.
I mean, it's going to change our bottom dollar. I mean, it's going to feed everybody, move the.
Wouldn't be adding any, wouldn't be adding any dollars to the bottom line. We'd just be changing the wording of where those dollars are earmarked for.
Exactly.
And that would be funding two deputies.
I mean, that'd be more.
It's more than that, but it's just.
So that would satisfy them.
That's 147, and we got currently $133.
133, 130.
I don't know.
If you amend the budget, that will satisfy what Judge Holt is after, basically. But that'll only fund two. So with the extra meetings that we're going to have, and maybe the additional funding that Jeff Arnold was working on, Mike can take care of the third. Is that what y'all are talking about?
That's what I'm saying.
I'm glad we're having that.
Okay. If there's no objection, I'll place this as a separate item on the next, on the next commission meeting that we'll make a basic adjustment for courthouse security and then tune of $95,000.
Does it need to go to the work session?
Yeah, yeah. Just rename those dollars.
I would.
We're not adding any money to the bottom line.
Yeah, but that's not really answering her question, what we're going to do about security. I know we're changing.
We're going to have a meeting.
Yeah, we're changing the work.
We'll be staying just like it is.
I know what you're saying.
We, we have never, we have never said we were going with a private security company. We got funded that way in the budget period, the budget costs, you know.
Always significant question. As I understand, then, what we'll, we'll do, and that would be budget, change the payroll section to fully fund two deputies for the entire year, back that out of contract services, put back up in the payroll. Then as you leave, we'll just decide on the third. Is that correct? Just want to make sure we were on the same page.
Because there's nothing there anyway for a third. I think we figured for nine and a half, 10 months, which that's going to give swing time to.
This thing may work itself out.
Right.
Is everybody in agreement?
Are you good with that?
To, to adjust.
Is that going to work, Chuck? Well, we'll see. I'm not going to give a definite answer unless I say what y'all are going to do again.
The thing with, when Mr. Arnold has time to look at what he's looking at, it might, it might be.
It will fully fund the.
Not the third.
The plan. And we may need more funds, and that's where we'll have to work together and see if we can find those funds to have that third.
Taking this out of the contract services and putting it back in payroll will take care of the.
That would take care of my concerns. It may not take care of the sheriff's. And I'm willing to work with him and work with the commission to see if we can find some way to get that third officer.
That's all I asked for. We got to figure out how to keep that third guy.
Well, that's what, I mean, like I said, at no time. We were talking about even getting rid of the third guy. You know, we just, we had to make some kind of changes. But like I said, maybe we shut down a door a month or yearly for the year. That might, you know what I mean, if we couldn't get anything else for it. That, that can be the worst case scenario.
We need to find out what the dollars, what kind of dollars we're talking about.
You know that figure out there, we'll know where we can leave.
We'll need to make to do that.
Sheriff, appreciate you working with us. I've been here six years. You've worked with us.
First time we've ever had a straight.
And I apologize that it's got, you know, the point that we got there. You know, there's no, never any intent to slide anything behind anybody's back or, you know, the commission to make a decision without all involved authorities being previous.
I'll take the blame because I'm going to be gone.
In the meeting we had today, I think that's something that would be, like Mr. Guffey said, once court, one hurting one, you know, so I mean.
It won't hurt anything. The purpose of the security committee initially was to come up with a plan. That was the purpose of the security committee, to assist the presiding judge in coming up with a security plan for the courthouse. And that was done. And historically, since 1998, once the plan was devised, the committee never met. There have been a couple of occasions where a subcommittee met when we closed one door temporarily. And the sheriff, Dennis Miller, the chief deputy, and I met and worked that out. But if you want the committee to meet, I'm. But if you want the committee to meet, I'm more than happy to have the committee meet to work out this issue that we have with the third deputy.
Maybe once we get kind of everything worked out, then we can like do it every quarter, maybe then we can go to every six months or something, just to touch base and see if there's something we need to do, something we need to change.
Well, the committee changes, the members have changed because we're all elected officials and, you know, sometimes a different person comes into office. So, you know, it can be problematic in naming the committee member because of that, but we can do that. I'm all about working with you to get that done.
Okay, I'll put this on the next agenda for the next commission meeting. Next is MOU for veteran from Old Park. This is something we talked about months ago, where the new veteran from Old Park is asking us and City of Scottsdale to take care of the maintenance of the park. And we get the even months, February, April, June, August, October, and December. And the City of Scottsdale is going to do the odd months, and they're going to do a memorandum of understanding just like that for their, for the city and for the deputy. If there is no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next, we have a sanitation resolution, Derek.
Yes, sir. In your packets, I've got the resolution at the second page and the consideration of the different packages on front page. I'd like to ask the commission if we would consider a resolution to change ordinance so that we can better assert the business of Jackson County, I believe. In nineteen ninety-two, we chose to, to have another department do some external work for us, and I'd like to change that resolution for the ordinance to where we could bring this into our office and the department for it be done there.
I'm for making that change. Daryl's done a great job with the sanitation department, and I feel like it was all in his department, he'd be better able to address the issues.
I like the idea of the move.
I do, too. A little bit of leeway sometimes, just not everything's got to drive when it comes to these exemptions and time frame with some other people that don't necessarily have transportation and whatnot and fairly get late, you know, I think so. They should be given a little bit of leeway, if they haven't been given.
If I could add, I don't know if it's in real request, I don't think it is, but it seems to me, well, we do never need to commend naming the sanitation director, because Daryl has the health officer. So Daryl has that authority, I don't know if he answered that a lot, but I would make that a recommendation.
Thanks, Senator.
Okay, I'll, no objection, I'll put this on the agenda for the next.
If we put this on the agenda for that meeting, then you will redraft and we present it back to the commission for the reason.
I will. If we can do it that way, or I'll try to get a resolution in before you consider it from that meeting, if we want to do that. Because they need to move on.
Yeah, it's time.
I'm sure that's right. I'm sure.
Next is temporary labor with Public Works, the senior package where the recommendation committee has asked to hire this person. If no one has objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next, we'll move on to the board from staff. Daryl, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, I'd like to provide some updates on homegrown projects at this time. County Route 22, which is a federal aid research project, as you recall, that's from US seventy-two to County Route forty-five in fact, Larry. You may receive some calls. It's approximately fifty-five percent complete. We did receive an E treatment last week. That's a tar gravel application that seals the cracks before the hot mix overlay. So we're not finished, you know, the road's not done, and that's not going to be the surface that they get. But in case you recall, next week, we anticipated the lead league and the final wiring surface layer on that, so fifty-five percent complete on that project. In your packets, should be important for the end, there's some photos of the concrete pavement project. As you recall, that was a local, local let project approved by this commission, which utilized the severance material tax. So that project is substantially complete, ninety-nine percent. We're working through some punch list items, but in your package, you'll find four, and some photos of those four sites at various places throughout the county.
You need to tell the contractor you use, they've done a great job. I would look at some of them, and then picture, you can really say, too, that they've really done a good job.
Appreciate that. I'll pass the word on. Thank you. County Route 22 bridge replacement, that's another local let project. Contract bridge items are complete, and still lots of contractor paving items. So there's work to be done and by our forces that can take place. So in the near, in the near weeks, maybe months, hopefully before COVID, we'll get that finalized and rest of local road resourcing. That is prepared to take place next week. A lot of this, this is chipped suitable, about eighty miles of local roads throughout the county that we plan to do. County Route five forty-four, five forty-five, first wave replaced today. The contract work most likely takes place next week, whether it be. So I want to provide those updates, and if there are any questions, I'll be my best answer.
Chief Arnold, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Jeff?
I'm good.
Board?
I have nothing, sir.
After we check with the commission, let's call them, Mr. Jeff. Mr. Benwell?
I'd like to thank you, too. You were my team, and we're tired last evening, but we're going to be out next week. And I appreciate some of the jobs we can do, and do the jobs we can come in, for reinforcement and to enable and willing to do.
I appreciate that. It's six.
I'd kind of like to just follow up for it, Mr. Jeff, I mean, Mr. Jason Venable's there. We've been fully took care of. You sitting here in the chairman's seat, wish you the best across the street, because you've done a great deal for Jackson County, Sheriff, right here.
I appreciate that, but you'll have one more meeting, man.
Well, it'll be fine, but you have, you've been a good asset, aren't you?
Well, this concludes everything on today's agenda, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll say the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. End of term.